All right.
Hey, I'm gonna put my, mute my phone here.
I have 7:30 on the news.
Good. Yeah, everybody mute their phones. All right, I call to order the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting for February 18th at 7:30 PM. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting slash hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and by sending a copy to the echo sentinel and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. At any meeting conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. A decorum appropriate to judicial meeting slash hearing must be maintained at all times. Electronic devices, all in attendance are pleased asked to mute all cell phones or electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceeding. Pledge of allegiance, Tom would you lead us, please?
Yes, glad.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Ms. Crawford Collins.
Here.
Mr. Gianakis is excused this evening. Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mr. Watts.
Here.
Mr. Sidrosne.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Here.
Chairman Corret.
Here.
Chairman, we have a court.
Thank you. So now, we have some resolutions to vote on. Jessica and Harold Alon, application number 24-19Z. It was hearing date of December 17th. Board action on December 17th. And our memorialization is gonna be on February 18th. Has everybody had a chance to review the resolution?
Yes.
Eligible members to vote are Chairman Corret, Vice Chairman Grosskopf, Mr. Aronio, Ms. Crawford Collins and Mr. Watts.
Okay. Any changes to the resolution or suggestions? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to move the resolution?
I'll move it. Okay.
We'll call.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Chairman Corret.
Yes. Right, now, the second one coming up is the Mi Suk Yun. The address is 329 Main Avenue and 287 Morris Street, Stoneley, New Jersey. Application, block number 11513, lots 3, 4 and 4.01. Application 24-18Z. Hearing date was December 17th. The board action was December 17th. And the memorialization is today, February 18th.
Same members.
Same members, okay. Do I hear a motion to, do there any changes to this? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call.
Ms. Crawford Collins?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
And Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes. All right, thank you. Okay, I'll take care of that business. Now, the next thing on the agenda is the application for bulk variance, block 13406, lot 36, zone R3, 307 Tanglewood Trail. Application number 24-24Z. Eileen Borland, application proposes to construct slash replace an existing deck. I see the applicant is walking up to the table. How you doing, Ms. Borland? How are you?
Thank you.
Do you wanna hold it or?
Sure.
Do you have any other witnesses besides yourself?
Witnesses to?
You have any, you have any expert witnesses?
No.
Okay, just asking because, you know, we always like to swear them in if you have them. We're gonna swear you in, but we'd just like to swear your experts in.
And before I do, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I did have an opportunity to review the notice. And I did have an opportunity to review the notice. It is sufficient in content. It was published on January 28th and certified male personal service on or about January 22nd, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear the matter and I'll swear in, Ms. Borland, as well as our board planner.
Oh, expert, right.
If you'll both raise your right hand, do both of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do, I do.
Thank you both. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now, Ms. Borland, would you just give us an overview while you're here?
We have a deck that's approximately?
Speak right into the mic, please.
I'm sorry. We have, currently, we have a deck that's well over 40 years old and desperately needs to be replaced. We have basically the same size deck to go and it's in the, and when the original deck was built, we probably didn't have the rules about so much, 40 years ago, so here we are.
Is there any changes that's going to be made? I noticed you have a photograph of the existing, right?
Correct.
And there appears to be no access from the back door, but on the new?
Yes, yes, there is.
Well, there's a step ladder going up to it. No, I meant?
There's definitely steps and there's a back door that leads out to the deck.
Deck out.
No, no, up, you mean at the deck height. I was talking on your, on your plans, you seem to have a slate walk that appears to be going on ground level. Is that, is that already there?
That goes from the drive to the bottom.
No, there's one on the right-hand side.
Oh, that goes underneath to, there's a back door to, that's, door is at basement level.
Okay, so that slate walk doesn't go anywhere, there's no access to the deck from there?
No, no, it's only from the flight of stairs up.
Oh, okay, all right. And then you have two walkways from your driveway to the wood deck on the other side.
Yes.
Is there any reason why you have two walkways?
Convenience getting out of the car in that spot.
Okay, 'cause it all goes to ground coverage. I'm just trying to, it all goes to ground coverage, so.
Yeah, no, it's more, one is, there's a curve and there's a, like a, we have two spaces down there and so if you can get out of the car and walk from there, that way, or as opposed from like the garage itself, you would walk around and pick up.
Other than replacing the deck, you're not, you're not doing, altering or changing any of the pathways?
Correct.
I'd like our planner to go over her report, just so she could explain to you what she found.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my report is dated February 11th, 2025. As the applicant explained, she is proposing to replace a deck essentially in kind as to what is there currently. The maximum lot coverage for this zone is 20%. There was no existing provided, but it's probably more or less the same to what they're proposing, which is 24.7%, so it exceeds it by 4.7%. The one thing, you know, a couple of items to note is that the lot is small for the zone. The minimum lot size in the zone is 30,000 and this is slightly under 20,000. So that all adds to, you know, the potential that they would exceed the lot coverage. The one thing that I noted is that there is a provision in the ordinance at 136.2G1 that you can sort of get a reduction in how, in impervious coverage for the deck if certain conditions are met.
And what were those conditions?
And so the conditions, I have them in my report, but?
What page?
Oh, page of my report is page four.
Okay.
And I think we can go through them. The one thing to note is, and I say this at the final sentence or so, is that even if we were to take that 50% reduction, she will still, or the deck will still be in access. But, so, you know, variance will be needed regardless.
Right, but we were just reducing the technical land?
The overage, yes.
The magnitude of the deviation.
The magnitude. So.
Those big words.
So.
I got that ESQ on the back. It was a test where you had to have a lot of big words.
So the, you know, everything complied, but there were a couple of items to get this reduction, but there were a couple of items where we requested additional materials and this is, I know, tripped up other applicants, 'cause, but one is that there has to be a minimum of 3/16 of an inch between any adjoining floorboards on the deck. And if that, I mean, that's something that you'd have to think about if you're willing to comply with that. And then you would have to put grated crushed stone and a bed eight inches deep under the deck with any necessary filter fabric to prevent clogging and a dry well with an effective volume equal to eight inches of uniformly grated crushed stone times the area of the deck.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Is it either or? It's a dry well or?
Oh, actually, yes, you're correct. Thank you, you're right, thank you.
Just checking that.
No, you're correct, thank you, Mr. Aronio. I will note that engineer Vuj or Woj did, you know, look at this application and didn't have any concerns necessarily with regard to stormwater. So, you know, if the applicant is willing to comply with that, comply with those standards, then the, you know, the magnitude of the overage will be reduced by a 1%.
What would it be, 24.6?
It would go from 24.7 to 23.7.
Oh, okay, 20, oh, 1 point, not 1.1, I'm sorry.
1%.
I didn't misunderstand.
Ms. Can I ask you, did you do calculations of the overage would be without the deck? If the deck were removed?
Oh. Yeah, I think it would still be over, I, sorry, I.
You mean the driveway, the deck, the walkways?
Right.
I mean, without the deck, it would still, okay.
Is that where Davis House is?
Put that microphone closer to you, because we.
It was called cluster zoning.
Right.
It was built like 30 houses on 30 acre, but I have, I have half the town behind me and there's an empty lot next to me, so, you know, it's just.
Does?
Where you're talking, it's like, it looks like it's an acre.
Check that mic, I don't think it's amplifying. Would you let her look at the mic? I don't, I don't think it's working.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. I could tell by the fact your voice wasn't being amplified. I think we changed batteries on that mandatorily twice every night. We don't have the Energizer Bunny. Yeah. They die as soon as the truck leaves.
They use their batteries to get the truck to go.
There you go, yeah.
So I just did a quick calculation that if 20% on this lot, you'd have, you would have to have about 3,800, a little bit over 3,800 square feet, and we're at 4,800. So you'd have to?
It's a lot of reduction.
It's a lot of reduction.
All right, so, that's almost not practical.
Right.
All right, well, you know, we always try to explore different things, so.
Liz, would it be fair to say that the cluster zoning, the open space and surrounding the lot may be relevant to, to an increase in lot coverage either by way of massing or stormwater, for runoff purposes?
I think typically you would say yes, right? Because the cluster zoning is putting the development in one sort of more densely developed in return for that dense development, there's more open space.
Right, right.
So I think if what you're getting at is maybe that's a consequence of the cluster zoning, then yes.
We see that in a lot of developments.
Yeah.
I recall when that was built also and it was, they used the terms back then, it was density modification is what they were talking about.
Oh, right, okay.
And there was land set aside, so they, they shrunk the size of the lots, like this is an undersized lot, which creates a hardship for you, yes, it does, in this, in this particular case. But all of the land that was set aside is not usable land. Much of that land is wetland.
Behind us, yes.
So the way I'm gonna go with this is, I like your, I like your recommendation of some type of mitigation, because even though it's 4% over, 4% of 20% is a lot greater than 4%, right? 20% is our maximum coverage. So it was a higher percentage over the maximum coverage than 4%, right?
Ms. Borland, what exactly is under the deck right now?
So.
Used to be the air conditioning unit, we moved that.
Well, what kind of ground coverage?
There's really no ground, just regular grass.
It seems pretty simple. In addition to that, there's streams behind that house.
Yes, next to the house, yes.
Right, well, it wraps all around that development.
Right, right, right.
Goes directly behind your house.
Yes.
It feeds the Passaic on both sides.
Correct.
Both to the east and to the west.
Right.
And to the east, I'm sorry, to the west of your house, when you're facing your house, I'm talking about when you're facing your house, is also Mountain Avenue.
Correct.
Which floods. So those, I know it's, I know it's small.
Mm-hmm.
It's very small, but every drop adds up, right?
Right.
So if we can keep a little bit of water off of Mountain Avenue flooding, I think it's important. And I know it's, you're not flooding Mountain Avenue.
No, no, no. But, one thing, our house and the house next door, and the only houses in development that do not have a sump pump.
Right.
Because we don't need it. We've been there for?
A little bit of burn.
Little bit of burn and it drains on the, on the empty lot further east on me, so.
Would you be willing to do the stone under the deck?
I guess so, sure. I, you know.
I mean, that would reduce your?
It's so low tech and not even a big cost, right?
Yeah, I mean, well.
Whatever is easier, I mean, right now.
There is some cost involved, but it would reduce your, your number for your impervious.
Okay.
And it would make it a little more palatable as far as going over the number of 20.
Okay.
We understand.
Leave it up to her at the time of construction, if she can talk to her professionals and see which is least expensive for her, to dig a seepage pit or to have the stone under the deck.
Wouldn't you say a, a pit is more expensive than the?
Could be, we don't know, because we're not digging it.
I would recommend that maybe as a condition of approval, if the board were urged to act, that the applicant consult with the board's engineer.
Okay.
As to what is?
To do either one.
To do either one and to see, you know, what's most cost-effective and also stormwater management-effective, because I don't know.
Okay, but I would assume anytime you have to bring in some sort of excavating equipment, it's gonna be more money.
Right.
It seems to me, if the deck's removed, eight inches of stone is not a tremendous big deal, because there's no deck there, you're not digging under a deck, right?
Correct, correct.
Eight inches is not a lot.
Okay.
Most contractors have little cabanas and stuff they can?
Liz, can I ask you?
We don't know about it, though.
Do they have to remove soil or can they just put the eight inches of stone on top of the hardpan that's there now?
That's a question for Joe. I don't, I really don't, I'm not sure, maybe.
You didn't, you didn't get osmosis all of this knowledge?
Are you building a box then, under the deck?
Basically, we'd have to, yeah.
Basically, it would be a, a, a lower area, like a, like a big dry well, basically.
Yeah.
And then take a pipe from there and drop it out.
Then you have to retain it, you have to retain that stone there.
Yeah.
It couldn't slip away.
Well, I think if you put it lower than ground level, it probably won't slip away.
He's talking about putting it above ground, that's why I'm saying that.
No, 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 I would be talking about digging.
Normally, I think you would do.
Yeah, I mean, but.
You could take some back.
So if in fact we do agree to your proposal, I think one of the conditions we would have, I think everybody agrees, that we would consult with our engineer, Joe, and ask him which, either the dry well or the stone under the deck, figure out which is more cost-effective and which would do a decent job, or if they would do the same job.
Okay.
And your board spacing on the deck, so that water could get through it. That's the whole point of the board.
Is that in the plan?
It's, it's, oh, sorry, it's in my letter, it's in our ordinance.
No, 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 I mean, we submitted the plans with the deck, was that?
It's going three, three?
Just a minute.
16-inch slot within the?
So they are doing?
3/16 of an inch slots.
They are three, they are 3/16?
No, I'm saying.
Oh, are they?
I got pulled out, the sufficient of the construction, I don't have any.
Oh, all right, well, we'll adjust it.
Not something that's easy to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, just back to the conditions, the two conditions. I really like speaking with the engineer because he's a smart guy and he knows about this stuff, but also, and I know he's gonna do the most reasonable thing for her, that's going to be, but I would also like to have the applicant have the least costly way out, right?
Well, that's what we're shooting for.
Right, yeah. That's the whole purpose of speaking with the engineer.
Yes.
Right, I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
Definitely, yes, to have him make sure that she's doing the most cost-effective method of?
Right, she can also consult with her contractor for that also, right?
Yes, because the person who does the deck could probably do that, too.
Yes, I would, I would hope so. But now, let me understand, if we, whatever the engineer says about either putting it down in the ground or above?
Well, no, it would either be a dry well, pipe water from under the deck or a stone structure under the deck. And if he says dig, dig, if he does, says not dig, don't dig.
All right.
Most likely, it's going to be put eight, eight inches of stone in the ground, under your deck.
In the ground, yeah.
Under your deck, that's.
Because it sounds like, the way the description is, you almost have to dig eight inches down.
Yeah, I would just, as opposed to putting a?
Yeah, water around it.
Retainers of some sort.
I don't think that would be of the same effect.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you'd have to collect the water and pipe it somewhere.
Yeah.
May I also suggest, if Joe can come up with a third option that's equally?
Yeah.
As effective and, you know, maybe, maybe that could be an option, too.
Okay.
Joe will ultimately determine the compliance with 136.2G1.
Right.
Which is what is being stipulated to.
For the ultimate goal, for the ultimate goal of reducing the number, the number when it comes to impervious.
And then the number will technically would be 23.7?
That's what I calculated the other day, I'll double check that. Just a minute.
So, that's, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Ms. Borland, the photograph, the photograph, did you take them?
Yes.
And approximately when?
In the summer, like.
As I say, it wasn't today.
No, 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 it was probably.
And that accurately depicts what it looks like today?
Oh, yes, yes.
And that's fine, weather.
I'm thinking it's more like probably August or?
That's fine.
Yeah.
But I mean, there's been no significant changes in the?
No, we.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's been no significant changes in the layout of the property since?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So everything that we see on your survey is the way it sits?
That survey was done recently, in the last six months.
Now, do we have any members of the public, other than your family, that wanna ask questions? You can ask questions, too, but I don't think you want to. Any other members of the, of the public?
She's under oath, get her to say something.
It has to be relevant to?
Relevant to this application. Okay, hearing none for the public, I'm gonna close it to the public for questions. Any other questions from board members? I've seen that we've been very quiet here. Do you have any other points that you'd like to discuss?
No, I just confirmed it, it would drop by a full percentage.
Full percentage, okay. Well, that's always, that's always desirable, you know, and it may even help some water issues on your property, if you have any.
No, unfortunately for us.
You don't, good.
We don't, we're high enough, you know, the front of the house is, you know, goes up to the front, half a dozen steps to the main entrance, but the back is a, they walk out basement.
Okay.
So the back is, you know.
Okay.
Would it be fair to say that by reducing it 1%, we've reduced the magnitude of a pre-existing non-conformity?
There you go.
That might constitute a benefit for purposes of, like that.
Right.
C2 criteria.
Right, that's definitely a benefit.
Yes, and it is certainly a benefit to the community.
Yes.
It is, absolutely.
Yeah, no, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, hearing there, there are no questions and are there any comments from the public? Okay, hearing no comments from the public, I assume, I'm gonna close it to the comments section of the public. All right, would, who would start, like to start deliberating?
I'll go if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I think that you, I don't know if you put the deck in or not, but it's been there for a long time.
40 years.
So the law was probably in effect at the time, but back then, things probably weren't handled the same way they are now.
I.
A lot of scrutiny on it, so somehow you end up with a deck that's non-conforming.
Seated charge.
Your property's non-conforming because of the reasons we stated before, whether it's density modification or some other term, you have that, so that presents a hardship. As our lawyer and our planner pointed out, you are making the situation better, you have an existing non-conforming use, but you're making the situation better by offering to put in some type of drainage system, whether it's under the deck or whether it's some kind of retention basin away from the deck. So you're improving that situation. So I think that you meet the positive criteria in that regard and it is, it is community serving, and I don't see any harm for this. I think it's gonna probably make your backyard look beautiful and?
You can see it from the road.
You can't see it from the street, but people that come to your house, it'll, it'll make everything better.
Oh, you can see it from the street.
Okay.
As you come around the bend.
So you'll improve the neighborhood, so I think that it's not a detriment to our town in any way, whether it's our zone plan or the ordinance or whatever, I think you're all good.
Thank you.
Meredith?
Well, I echo Jerry's same sentiments. I think the fact that the dimensions for this new deck that you're proposing are pretty much the same as the previous deck, too, that unless otherwise previously disclosed, they have not been problematic in the past in their size or setback. I do think that the benefits greatly outweigh the detriments to this. I think it'll definitely improve, you know, your property's value and desirability, too. I mean, I'm sure that after 40 years, that's probably gotten a lot of weathering and a lot of use.
It's very weathered, yes.
And it needs to be improved and I'm sure, you know, safety-wise, too, I mean, the steps look pretty old.
Yes.
I think that you've shown a real willingness to wanna conform, your openness to either putting in the dry well or the graded stone. And I think that you had said, too, being able to work with something that's effective but also financially desirable, too. I think they had said something in here, too, that despite the proximity to the Passaic tributaries, this is not in a flood zone, is that correct?
Correct.
I believe so. And you've been amenable to our suggestions and the willingness to work to conform, so I would absolutely approve this application.
Thank you.
Donovan.
Um, yeah, I agree with everything that's already been said. I will just add the one, obviously, that, you know, the size of your property and that we've already determined that even if this deck didn't exist, you would still be nonconforming. So, I don't think that this really exacerbates the situation, and I would be supportive of this.
Thank you.
Wendell.
Yeah, I, I don't really have anything to add, Ms. Boylan. Thank you for taking the time to go through the application process. Sounds like you're kind of got, your family kind of got jobbed by the size of your lot in the first place, so, um, and I'm happy to hear that the condition that you're probably going to do with the stones and everything isn't a major one in the scheme of things. So, all that being said, that's all I really have to add.
Thank you.
Alex.
Um, no, nothing really to add at this time. It all seems to me. Good luck with it.
Paul.
Uh, again, nothing really to add. I would be in full support of Ms. Boylan, you know, if this passes for her.
Thank you.
And again, I appreciate, you know, her going through this process, and I hope you do take the easiest path as far as cost wise for, you know, rectifying.
I don't think so.
Any drainage problems or whatever. I know. And I'd be in full support of this passing.
Bye.
Thank you.
Uh, I also thank you for coming in and going through the process, and it does take a time, but it's well worth it because we don't want our town to go crazy, everybody doing whatever they want to do. So, thank you for going through the process. Uh, I hope you don't tell everybody how terrible it was, because it's not, because you've got somebody like Deb taking care of you. Tell me to tell Randy at Ray's time. Okay, yeah. Sorry, that was unprofessional of me. Wait, I'm not getting paid. Um, but also, your neighbors won't even notice much of it, other than the deck went down and went back up again. So, that, that's great. So, there's no disturbance to the neighborhood, other than you're now going to help direct water flow a little bit better, which is good for everyone. Uh, just looking forward to approving this.
Thank you.
I feel the same way. I think the positives outweigh the negatives by far. Uh, we are going to work on reducing that impervious by putting some sort of water mitigation in there, whatever is the most economical and best for, that our engineer will work with you on.
Okay, thank you.
And as everyone said, it, it's basically just replacing what's there. Yeah, unfortunately, you happen, you happen to get caught up in the fact that your property was undersized, and it does have impervious coverage on it, uh, as most properties do. So, I would also be in favor of it. Um, and thank you for coming before us, because we like to see the people follow the ordinances and, you know, get our approval, so that we can, we actually have an idea and a knowledge of what's going on in these neighborhoods, and we know that our water situation is not getting worse than it already is, basically, because we don't want to cause problems for other neighbors and other areas. Okay.
Steve. Yeah, I could tee it up.
Yeah.
Motion, I have a motion to grant variance relief, both under the C1 undue hardship and the C2 benefits outweighing the detriments criteria, alternative bases both being satisfied for lot coverage, 24.7% technically, but effectively 23.7% versus 20% maximum submitted, with all the stipulated two conditions, including the comments in the planner's memo of February 11th, specifically compliance with land use ordinance 136.2G1, as discussed, subject to the review, approval, consultation, and benefit economically and otherwise of our board engineer, Mr. Boich. Um, and I believe that is it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to, do I hear a move, a motion to move that?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Call the people that were eligible, please.
And Mr. Zdravstven will be voting in place of Mr. Dune.
Yes.
So, we have Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Zdravstven?
Yes.
And Chairman Gross.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, now the adventure begins. This is the easy part.
Thank you for your time also.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You can put that back in the.
Back, Mr. Dune. Hold on, try.
She's looking to change the batteries yet.
I see.
They're about dead.
If we don't do that once, at least once a night, we're not working. Yeah, just leave it there. Okay, um.
Mr. Rodriguez.
The next applicant, I must recuse myself. I own property within 200 feet, so I am going to allow my trustworthy and quite capable vice chairman to run the meeting.
Did we want to take a five minute break?
Yeah, can we take a two minute break? And then we'll start. Let, let the, let the applicant set up.
Witness in our board professional, board planner. Will you all raise your right hand and you all already have done so. So, you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you all. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about the project and why you're before us?
Sure. So, just real quick, this is Ronald Rodriguez. Ronald Rodriguez, he's the homeowner. My name's Alexander Rodriguez. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing architecture since 2005. And I have my own architecture firm, AR Architects at a summit in New Jersey.
And if I recall correctly, you've been accepted as an expert in the field of architecture by Land Use Sports in the state of New Jersey, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. By this board or before?
Uh, no, I've not appeared before this board. This is the first time.
Union County at least, correct?
I've appeared before at the city of Summit, New Providence, most recently Borough of Burnetsville.
And okay, and I believe I've seen you before, at least some, if not all of us. But I cannot personally attest. I think the board will accept your testimony and the chair will decide if you're accepted as an expert.
And the chair does.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. So, I'm just gonna quickly kinda just run through the project. Do you guys have the drawings there?
Did we just give us the last revised date on the drawings?
Uh, yes, it's November 12th, 2024. It should be the drawings that you guys have up there as well. Just quickly, just kinda go through the site plan. I do wanna mention that we are in an R3 lot. We are undersized for our, for this zone. What's allowed is 30,000. This particular lot is 17,000. So, we're currently undersized on that. The variances that we are seeking are mainly the side yard setback variances. Currently, what is required is 25 feet and what, so, right now, there is an existing non-conforming as far as the left side and the right side. As far as those existing numbers, it's 22 feet and 20.5 feet respectively on the left and right. On the left side, we are looking to reduce that down to 14 feet by, we wanted to increase the size of the existing one-car garage. So, currently, on the left side of the house, there's an existing one-car garage. We want to increase the size of that side of the house to a two-car garage. We're not looking to make that garage oversized. The interior dimension of the garage is about 1910. So, we feel that that's a comfortable two-car garage. And by extending this an additional eight feet out to the left side, we're asking for a 14-foot side yard setback on the left-hand side of the property. And then, one of the other things that we're looking to do is just to increase the overall, you know, functionality of the house. Currently, it's an existing two-bedroom, one-bath house. We're looking to make it three-bedroom, two-baths house. And by adding a one-story addition off the back, the approximate size of that addition is 25 feet off the back, 24 feet wide. And we are, if you look at the house, when you first come in, there is an open area which automatically allows view towards the back. And that's one of the things that the homeowners loved about the house when they first purchased it. They didn't wanna put the addition smack dab right in the middle of the property. So, we were looking to push it off to the right-hand side where we're providing this one, this one bedroom with a walk-in closet, a primary bathroom as well. And then, we were also looking to put a laundry room up there. Currently, their existing laundry room is down in the basement, which they can actually have to go out through the garage. That's where they have to access the stairs to the basement. So, their existing access to the basement, they have to go out through the garage and then downstairs. So, they're trying, they're looking to make the house more functional. So, they don't necessarily have to go out into the cold of the garage and then go downstairs where they can do their laundry on the first floor. So, that's kinda where the size of this addition came into play. And again, we're pushing it off to the right-hand side to allow the view and allow the functionality of the backyard. So, that right-side, that right-side side yard setback is about 16.5 feet. We're looking to conform to the lot coverage. Currently, it was at 15.8 percent. And we are looking to maximize the existing lot coverage to 20 percent. So, we're not looking to go over that existing percentage. We feel that this addition is consistent with the house and the neighbor. It's currently a ranch. We're not looking to do a two-story addition. We're keeping it a one-story addition. We're not looking to make it a two-story. So, we're keeping it consistent with the existing house. And we feel that this has no negative impact for the neighbors.
Any questions from the board? If, if the board.
This?
Or after our planners.
Go ahead.
Either Mr. Rodriguez, I guess, can answer. But the, I notice you may have some interested neighbors as well. But on Chestnut Street, first of all, when you say to the right, that's the west because due north is the bottom of the page, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, lot, is it lot 13? I'm straining to the west, immediate right?
Yes, that would be lot 13, correct.
And do you know where the home is located as well as the driveway, the garage, you know, et cetera, on that side?
Do you know, I, I didn't pay that much attention to, to that neighbor to the right.
To the right?
Yeah.
Right, front and house.
Correct.
Do either of you know the approximate distance between the, your property line into the applicant's property line and the dwelling on lot 13?
I do not have that information, no.
Do either of you know the approximate distance between the property line on the east, your easterly property line, and the dwelling on lot 15?
No, I don't have that information.
So, then I take it neither of you could tell us, well, can neither of you tell us whether that would be the garage, whether it would be bedrooms, or what would be located on the side of the home closest to your property line, on either the east or the west?
Are you familiar with the neighbors to the left and to the right, Ronald?
Do you live there?
No, we don't.
You don't live there?
We don't live there.
Who lives there?
No, it's big in there. The house is still big in there.
They're, they're currently doing some construction.
Is it your intention to move in or to have someone else move in?
No, we don't. We gotta move today.
You're gonna move in?
Yeah, we wanna move today.
Okay. But you don't know how close the neighbor is, or you don't know where, you know, is it the garage on either side? Do you know?
Hot close, say, but...
Well, I don't want you to guess.
25 feet, I guess.
Believe me, I know that, I suspect you're, we have the neighbors from at least one of the dwellings here. No, I'm sure, the intuitive. The, that's fine then. I'm gonna pass it back to either the chair or the planner.
Thank you. One, there was the side yard variances that are existing, but they're getting, they're being exacerbated. They're getting closer on both sides. But there's also a variance that you need for the proposed generator, which is, I have to admit, there's like a kinda idiosyncrasy in our ordinance that requires that generators be a certain distance from the house, which I think is not practical.
Right.
But you still need, you still need that variance. The one thing that I recommended to the board is that there are, there's the proposed generator. There's also, I think, HVAC equipment.
Correct.
In the side yard and that that be landscaped or, you know, fenced or some combination of the two. Particularly, I mean, not only to your neighbors, to the, to your sides, but also to shield it from the streets, from the, from the Chestnut Street. But those were really my only two.
Maybe we should just get those conditions into it.
Yeah. Would you, would you be willing to do that?
Willing to do so. So, either Mr. Rodriguez, if one can speak to the other. The, first of all, you really don't have a choice. You have to comply with the noise ordinance.
Right.
But, and including the unnecessary noise ordinance, chapter 1-15.1. But we'll take it that you'll be complying with that.
You're asking for a fence or landscaping? Is that, is that the requirement?
Yeah, I think, I personally think landscaping is nicer, but I think it could be some combination along, to shield really that equipment. And I think by doing that, you're also gonna be shielding the appearance of the addition.
Of course.
Right, from the, from the street. So, that's, that's a help. I think maybe, once we hear from the neighbors, that there may be some, the board might request additional landscaping or some sort of mitigation measures along the side lots, lot lines too.
You'll stipulate to landscaping for the AC generator?
Yes or no?
Yes, okay.
Steve, would that be enough for sound mitigation?
Well, I'm gonna go back. The, the, well, we can't really decide what would or wouldn't necessarily, but they have to comply with the ordinance. NJAC 7:29 is the regulatory provision of the DDP at the state level that determines noise, the appropriate decimal levels, 50 dBA at night from 10 p.m. to 7 a.m. And 65 dBA is the maximum permitted decimal levels of the property line during the day, 7 a.m. to 10 p.m. But the, and all municipal ordinances with respect to noise are to be compliant with those with NJAC 7:29. And in order to be effective, need to be approved by DEP. But, and I'm sure ours has been missed, it does. So, so, they have to comply with that. And in compliance, or just in the ordinary course, if you will, for all residents, if somebody's making too much noise and someone's alerted to the fact that they might be making too much noise at the township, then we have mechanisms by which they can be tested and make sure they're in compliance with the noise ordinance, or else there can be potential fines, et cetera.
Just to intercept, the landscaping and the fencing wouldn't really be for noise. It might help. It's more aesthetics.
It'll all mitigate a little bit.
Yeah.
I know we did that on an application about two or three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Because the neighbor was complaining of the site and sound.
So, we got the landscaping stipulated to, compliance with the noise ordinance is required anyway, but applicant knowingly stipulates the same. Did you have any other, you didn't have any others?
I really didn't.
I guess that's it on that.
Yeah.
Back to the chair.
Yeah.
Members of the board, yes.
I was gonna ask a question about the proposed generator that you're planning on putting in. As far as noise mitigation is concerned, have you given any consideration to whether you're gonna be doing a liquid-cooled generator or an air-cooled generator? Because one makes more noise than the other.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far.
Well, if it's a consideration, liquid-cooled is usually more desirable, only because when it's, when it's liquid-cooled, that absorbs more sound and vibration when it turns on. And then, the air-cooled one, because of the fans, typically tend to make more noise. I don't know. I think water-cooled tends to be more expensive. But I do know that usually when, if, if noise is a consideration in a more condensed, excuse me, in a more dense, densely populated neighborhood, I do know that the, the water-cooled ones tend to make less noise.
Okay, we'll look into it. Thank you.
Couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. So, our, going back to, our ordinance is relative to how far the generator is from the structure, the house, not how far it is from the neighbors, right?
That's correct. And, and I think it, it just doesn't make sense, right?
Yeah.
That it's, it's 10 feet required and...
But, but we don't have any requirement for, it could be right up on the line, on the, on the...
Well, it's an accessory structure.
It's accessory structure, yeah. I mean, there would be requirements.
Wait, it's 10 feet from the property line?
Well, it's 10 feet from the principal building, I think. Yeah, from the principal building and then from the side and rear yard. It's both.
Okay. So, it's, this is five feet from the principal building, but more than 10 feet from the property line?
Correct. It's about 13.
Got you. Okay.
Yeah.
And I see, I think there's an existing fence on the, is it the west side or whatever?
Yes, it is.
Is there a plan to take that fence down?
Yes.
Are you going, planning to replace that fence?
Put a new one.
Okay. And I don't know, what is the fence? It's a wood fence now?
It is a wood fence now.
And...
We're trying to put a, the new...
Sorry, can you speak into the mic in a little?
We're not gonna put the, the plastic.
PVC.
The PVC.
Like a, like a six-foot high or whatever?
Six, six-foot high.
And that's just replacing in, in time where the existing fence is, or do you plan to extend it?
Correct.
Further? It's gonna be just...
Yeah, go around, around the...
And, but the other side of the house, there is, is, you go all the way around the entire property?
Yeah, go around the, the whole property.
Okay.
And the back.
Those are my only questions.
You said that fence was gonna be six foot?
Six foot.
Then what's our ordinance for fences in the front yard?
The front yard has to be four feet.
Yeah.
Is it four feet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, front, frontward plane of the house. So, the fences, that's...
But that would be extending forward from the front of the house, right? Anything behind the front edge of the house?
Anything extending forward to the front plane of the house has to be four feet unless you grant a variance. But, and anything from the side, the front lane, side, back, be
Will, is he, will he comply with the four-foot?
Yes.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Any additional questions, Randy?
No.
Okay.
Any questions from the public?
Welcome to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Please be...
For questions, you don't have to be, but you do have to give us your name and address. Yes, I'll do it.
And, and you don't need to tell us from which university you're an alumni.
Actually, it's my son. This is what he gave me. So, anyway.
Oh, yeah.
My, just go ahead.
Name and address, and then questions of the, of either witness.
Uh, my name's Keith DiMatteo. I live at 451 Chestnut Street. So, we're the house to the right of 441.
So, you are lot 13?
Is that what it is?
West?
Yeah, we're on the west side.
You're facing the house from...
Yeah, we're on the right side. Yeah, right.
The generator side.
That's right. I was picking up on that. Yeah. I saw the diagrams. Nice work. And welcome to the neighborhood again. And I really applaud your effort to wanna improve the property. It's been in a lot of disrepair for years. We've been here 25 years. So, we've seen it kinda deteriorate. So, my concern is...
Before you get to, if you have questions?
Oh, well, the question really is, and it's a concern too, is where, where the downslope of, on the property? So...
If the, if the chair doesn't mind, I'll swear you in. You could ask questions and make comments with all of us.
All right, go for it.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed with questions and comments.
Okay. So, what is being, so, we're downhill, right? So, I noticed there's a slope. You're gonna be, there's a, it's kind of a semi-steep slope, I guess, if you will. We didn't have any problems with any water running off, water flow problems in the, because there were a lot of bushes around the sides. But those are all gone now. So, is there anything specific that you're gonna do to make sure the water, stormwater is, you know, trafficked away from our house? And make, you know, push towards the, towards the, the road or in the back?
So, yeah, so, we're gonna provide, we would be providing gutters on, on the addition.
Okay.
And then, as Ronald just stated, the idea is to bring those gutters towards, towards the front of the house.
Okay, so, there'll be, so, they'll come down and then the back one will come down and then be directed towards the front?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Does that make sense? To the front to where?
So, they'd be facing north, the gutters, the, it would, but if the gutters are going towards the street, that would mean the gutters would be, the spout would be going, heading north. But is that a downslope?
Well, the way it's today is it's going down and it's going into a, I don't know, little basin area, you know, one of those concrete...
Catch basin.
Yeah. But I don't know. I'm assuming you, they dig a hole and then, you know, so, and then run PVC valve pipe underneath to, and then, I guess, connect to the front, connect to the front gutter? So, they kinda join together and then just flow out?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
When you say flow out, do we know where that exits? Is it going to a sewer? Is it going to a dry well?
Do you know where the, where the water fits the property?
I mean, because we actually have something like this on, on, on the same side, actually. And it, we've actually dug a little opening on the, you know, if you're looking out to the road, we've dug a little opening with the PVC valve is, I mean, valve. Piping is exposed. So, the water's running, pushing towards the front, coming down from the back, from our sunroom gutter, as well as the living room gutter. So, they join and then they go towards the front.
Is it, is it joining the sewer out front?
No, not at all. No. It's just going right into the ground and just flowing in.
I don't think they're allowed to tie in the sewer.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good question though, but...
I don't know what they did 40 years ago.
Yeah.
Now's the time to ask.
So, right, no, I know exactly what you're saying. But there's, there's no connection to the sewer, at least from what I, what we put in. So...
So, it just disperses underground?
Right, right. But it keeps the water away from the house. And it, it's working really well, actually.
So, if they did something similar to your setup as a condition, would that...
That would make sense.
...alleviate your concerns, assuming that is up to code and, you know, can do that and stuff?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that would be great.
Is that something the applicant can agree to, subject to the review and approval of our engineer?
Absolutely.
Okay.
To confirm that it's a minor development, not subject to the stormwater, exempt from stormwater management requirements. But, but nevertheless, I'm sure the board appreciates that there's additional coverage, even though it's under the lot coverage, just under the maximum permitted lot.
There was something else I had.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Do you have anything? Yeah, come on up. What was mine again? I had another. Oh, so, there is a fence on the left side, obviously. Is there any plans to put a fence on the right side?
All right.
Around the back, okay. Is that a separate variance required? Because I didn't see that in the plans.
Not if, 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 by name, Mr. Chairman. Please, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, but not if he stays within the six-foot on the rear end side and four-foot on the front yard, maximum heights for the fence. And I said they'll be on or about at the property lines, not over and approaching. We don't have any requirement for 50% open or anything like that, right?
No.
So, you could go right up to the property line with the fence?
They can.
Okay. I just wanna, yeah. Okay. And what kind of fence were you guys thinking of putting in?
I don't know.
Okay.
Those white fence.
A white fence? Okay, all right. Kinda like the white picket fence concept? Okay. Is there a timeline you're thinking about that? Or is that, because I didn't see any of that in the plan. So, it sounded like it, you know, I didn't know if it was an add-on later dawn or, or...
I think it'd probably be, you know, as the construction moves along, that's something towards the end of the project, ever looking.
Okay.
Would be that fence.
So, how far would the fence go? From, from the back corner of the property, all the way to, how far forward?
Just around the back.
Oh, just around the back?
Just around, around the back.
Okay, okay. All right.
And if we could just have your name as well?
Margaret DiMatteo, 451 Chestnut Sterling.
And, you know what, I can swear you in. That way, you can make comments and...
Yeah, I just have a question for the board, but...
I trust you. Go ahead.
Square me. Um, 'cause I, I think, I just wanna verify that there's no, there's no distance from the property line, no limit on that, because it's an undersized lot. So, they're building out closer to our house and there's nothing, there, there's no problem with that.
Maybe Liz and I can go and help explain, Mr. Chairman. There are, there are side yard setback, there are setback deviation, there are setback regulations for front, rear, and both sides. And as I understand it, and Liz will correct me if I'm wrong, the side yard, side yard setbacks are 25 feet from each, east and west. And existing are already closer than that. The encroach all, the existing dwelling encroaches.
Yeah, it's less than that.
And the proposal is to encroach a little further in each direction, because as you can see on the plans, the, one addition is completely on the side for the second car of the current one-car, proposed two-car garage. And the other is a rear addition, but it encroaches further into the side yard on your side, the, I think, western side, such that on the east, the addition for the garage would be 14 feet, not 25 feet away from that property line. And on, on your side, so to speak, it would be 16.5 versus 25 feet on your side. So, they have pre-existing encroachments into each side yard setback. They're asked, that's why they're here, they're asking for variance relief for more, I guess, in part because instead of going up, they're going in part out. And so, hence, there's those two deviations and variances that they're seeking. And also, the generator, according to our ordinance, is required to be at least 10 feet from their dwelling. They're not going as far away from their dwelling. They're going a little closer. So, as frankly, if they went 10 feet, I believe they'd be a couple of feet violating the accessory structure side yard setback. So, they're avoiding doing that by keeping it, the generator, a little closer to the, their own dwelling. Those are the three deviations, the three variances they're seeking.
Okay.
Probably more than you asked for, but I...
No, I just wanted to, because I, it just seems like it's a small property and, you know, they're allowed to get a lot closer to our house, but, you know.
Well, they only have to, relief is granted. I think they've argued already that one of the issues is the lot might be undersized.
Right.
Might even be narrow in that it's 100 feet wide as opposed to 150 feet wide, which is the parameters for lot width, minimum lot width in the, in the zone. So, they're probably arguing some of those things as to why they think they should be a little, allowed to be a little closer than if they're otherwise allowed.
Counselor, may I also add this? You may have heard, Mr. Matteo, that they're going to put a six-foot fence up. So, that's gonna be on your property line regardless of where the extension is on, on the house. So, I mean, unless you can pierce over the six-foot, doesn't make too much of a difference. I, you know, I'm not trying to tell you how to feel. Just, I'm just trying to relieve some...
Yeah.
But, but you're entitled to continue to question as well as to make comment in opposition, if that's your position.
I mean, I just...
To the variance relief.
Yeah. I, I would be happier if the addition was not jutting out, if it was farther to the left. I didn't really understand the whole thing about the view. And I guess that's why it's more to the right. Yeah. So, I don't know if there's anything that can be done, but that's my feeling.
I actually, I wanted to follow up on that, actually. So, you, you do jut out by four feet off the, off the back, right? And so, as I see it right now, you have, on the rear, you have your dining room, living room, bedroom across the rear. So, and then, I guess there's something else there. So, the, the view to the back, existing, the existing issue, the existing structure, where is, where are those windows? There's no windows in the bedroom, in the existing bedroom, to the back?
No, there, there is, so, so this back right, is that the one?
Yeah.
So, there is an existing window there.
That'll be closed off.
That's gonna be closed off. And then, you know, that's the window to, to the neighbor, that's gonna remain. But the, the one windows, the view that we wanna keep are the windows in the living room, dining room, kitchen, which are those existing views there.
So, but you are, you are kind of encroaching into the living room by a certain percentage there for the hallway, right?
Well, in order to create the hallway, to get, you know, to get access into the bedroom.
Yeah.
You know, because again, you know, you see, you see where the two bedrooms are. There's the two bedrooms and a bathroom. You know, we weren't, we weren't gonna reduce the size of those bedrooms to kinda create a hallway. So, you know, we, we reduced our view by about four feet. And then... by about four feet, um, and then from there created the hallway to get back access to the bedrooms, um, and then we created, you know, the primary suite. And then, you know, just in order for us to get the, the functions in there, the walk-in closet and primary bathroom.
So, so from the, the wall, the, uh, the new wall for the, uh, addition, moving, I guess that's east, um, along the back, is all of that going to be windows?
Correct.
So from the wall all the way to, I guess, wherever the door is to the patio, I guess?
Yep, exactly.
That's south.
Yeah, but moving, I'm saying moving east across the rear end of the, of the property. So, how many feet of window, I guess, would you say that is? Can you tell us?
Um, well, there, there is that one patio door, that's about an eight-foot patio door, um, so then we probably have about ten feet of, of window, approximately.
Okay, and the, I assume it's a window door, yeah.
Right, and then also, just, just real quickly, just going back to the elevations, you can see, you can see that rear elevation where we have the eight-foot patio door, and then we have the, the windows here as well. And again, just trying to keep that view from, from the living room and everything.
So there's no view in the new addition on the back? Is that what you're saying? There's no window there? Looking into the back with the addition that you're putting in?
So, yes, so this is, this is the addition.
Okay, so there are windows.
So there would be some windows in the bedroom.
But you're pushing it out because you want to keep the other view?
Correct.
Okay, I, I understand that now.
Exactly, we want to keep the window and patio.
So.
That was one of the things that attracted them to the house to begin with.
Yeah.
So, so, again, I'm not saying this is what I'm recommending, but if you were to push the addition back to be, so that it, it's, it's, you know, four feet to the east, you're saying you would lose half of the window space, because you're saying, I think you said, it was a ten feet or eight feet of window? I think you said ten feet.
Approximately, you know, eight foot for the sliding, about ten feet.
Okay, so you'd lose about forty percent of the, of the window that you would, if you pushed it back, okay?
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, please, and just to remind the board and everyone, that even if it were flush, in other words, if it were four feet, if, if the addition were moved four feet to the east, or shrunk four feet either way, uh, they would still need, uh, a, a, a side yard setback, uh, variance relief, because they are extending horizontally, I got it right. Extending horizontal, public school education comes in handy, extending horizontally, horizontally, the existing encroachment into the side yard setback.
But it wouldn't be further.
Whenever we go up or back, uh, with an existing encroachment into a setback, that requires variance relief in and of itself, but this is an exacerbation as well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, and just one more, so the bathroom that's being added, is there is a window facing to the west?
Correct, yes, there is.
Okay. Would, and I, I know there was, um, Mr. Tomadio, I guess, you mentioned that there was, used to be bushes on that side?
Right, pine trees.
Okay, is that something that, I mean, is that something that would be amenable to, I guess, the, I'm just throwing things out there. Does that?
For more privacy?
For more privacy, or is that something, I'm just asking if that's a consideration on either side?
Is there a proposal for any perimeter landscaping, if I may?
Yeah, I guess that's the question.
Uh, not at the, not at the moment, it was, it was just the fence, the six-foot fence, it was going to be gone all along there. Um, and just, just to kind of clarify there, there were, I guess, a number of trees and shrubs right where the addition is going to go, and then I think Ronald has, has taken them down already.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where the addition is.
Is there any, if I may, is there any existing perimeter landscaping, I guess, perhaps all four of you could speak to that, but, but for now, we'll start with the, the applicant as witness? No? None? Okay, so you're proposing the fence, but there's no existing landscaping on the perimeter?
If, if we were to approve this, would that be something you'd be willing to put landscaping on that side, whether it's shrubberies or something?
Yes, I mean, I guess, I, I mean, he's saying, you know, we are, but I guess once we put the fence up, then, you know, is.
I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know, you know.
You know, I, I guess my thought is, you know, it's, once the fence goes up.
Well, it could also be a beautification thing, I don't know, you know, if it's, that's an issue, but I'm sure it's going to be a very nice looking, uh, property, you know. Uh, it looks like, and as your neighbor has testified to, it's going to be an improvement over what's there, obviously, because whatever's there, I'm sure is an eyesore. So.
And just, just kind of real quick, you know, obviously, just, you know, as a functionality as far as the property is concerned, you know, as far as, you know, the, the homeowners are concerned, they're going to have more use for the center of their property, you know, they're not really going to have more use for that side of the property, you know, so even if that, even if that, even if we went back to the twenty-foot dimension, what, they're not really going to use that and the, that edge of the property, you know, so.
All the more reason for it to be landscaped. I mean, because I would say, just, just to counter what you said, yes, six feet for a fence is going to do something, but trees grow, right, and so they'll be above six feet, and so I, I think it would be a nice, uh, mitigation to provide some, some trees along there.
And, and I guess it depends on, on the landscaping, because when I, when people said landscaping, I'm, I was thinking of smaller bushes.
Right.
Not necessarily the tall.
Right. But I, but I think maybe some, some evergreens or something like that, because you are up against a closet, so that's good, because there's no windows on that side. Um, so I think, you know what I'm saying, so the landscaping along that wouldn't be obstructing any views out from the interior of the house. And, uh, I think something like evergreens that would grow taller than the six feet could be helpful, would be a good idea.
Would that be, uh, with the request, because the applicant will decide what, if anything, they stipulate to, but would the request be one side, the other, both? What would be the?
Since only one side showed up.
Yeah.
Maybe ask Ed, he's on the other side.
Well, I.
Don't want to divide people anymore than they might already be.
I have a question, too, because, you know, when I was looking at this plan, I was like, thinking to myself, the size of the closet is, is quite large. However, I did have to take into consideration the fact that you're trying to keep in with the, the aesthetic of the neighborhood and not build up. So you take advantage of, you don't have the benefit of having an attic, so that closet also doubles as storage space, too, I'm assuming, because it looks quite large.
Uh, yeah, I mean, nowadays with today's standards, that's kind of what people are, you know.
They want a big closet, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're looking for a nice size, you know, walk-in closet.
Right.
You know, just for, for a couple, for them to be able to play their full options.
And this sounds sort of old-fashioned, but there, there is presently a basement on, for the house.
There is, yes.
Is it a dirt basement, or is it like a concrete basement?
You can, it's concrete, you can walk down, but again, access is through the garage.
Okay.
Um, the, the one concern that I have in looking at the plan, it says new air conditioning units, so right now there was never any air conditioning in this house, right?
I think that there probably, there are, uh, I think there is one existing AC unit, but we're replacing them and we're putting.
You're going two-zone, yeah.
Is that central air?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, my concern is, is that, you know, you, you have a generator there, you have two AC condensers there, you know, and they're, and they're fairly close, usually AC units are close to the house anyway. Uh, I'm wondering, is, is there any precedent for the, you know, the generator being so close to the house? Do we normally go with something like that? And, and what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that you're, you're then looking at a, at a, a fence there, right? And you were talking about a PVC fence. I'm assuming, is that like a privacy PVC fence, or is that going to be an open PVC, PVC fence? Because I don't want to have like an echo chamber be created in there with all this heavy equipment running and, and generating some sort of, you know, additional noise, which kind of goes to the, the landscaping to a certain extent, might act as a bit of a muffler there. It's one concern.
Fence is proposed, is the question.
It was, it's a solid.
Solid, solid PVC, okay.
Maybe a little, uh, greenery will help knock down some of that sound for you.
Again, if, if there's going to be, uh, either a stipulation or an imposition of a condition with respect to landscaping, I got to know what it is. Is it one side, the other, both, rear, you know, reasonable evergreen, subject to review and approval of board planner, where, where is it?
Right, well, the, the one thing I'll note is along the garage side, it's a little more difficult because there are windows from the garage. And so in terms of.
There's what?
Windows.
A window.
Out, where, and then that's what I was saying about, uh, the west side, is that it's, it's up against a closet. There are no windows, so, um, I, that's why I thought it would, it's an appropriate place for landscaping.
So we're saying west side only?
I mean.
What do we ask?
That, I'm saying, yeah, I, I would, I mean, I think the board can ask for whatever it wants, right? But I would think that maybe some arborvitae or something along the west side.
Is that something the applicant would stipulate to?
Some deer-resistant arborvitae.
Deer-resistant, and, uh, we can have a review, approval of board planner?
Yeah.
Is that acceptable to the applicant? I suspect it might be acceptable to the west side neighbors.
Yes.
A question for you, since there has been no landscaping plan, you are planting, planning to put some plantings in the front of the house as well, right? Okay, I assume so.
I have a request, or actually, it's not necessary for you guys, it's, um, so they, they did a property survey, and I can't seem to locate my, my original one. I'm wondering, should I just get another one done? Just to kind of match up and make sure everything's cool? No guidance?
The board will allow me, that's really not the board to.
Okay, so it's my decision then?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, because, yeah, just, I mean, it's more of a proactive measure, it's not questioning anything, it's.
Technically, all the board can do, like a jury, if you will, for lack of a better analogy, is hear this application and decide whether to grant her with conditions or deny.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. And then one last thing, I think there was a comment or question about what was on the right side of our house?
Oh, you, uh, I guess you can answer, I guess, with the chair's permission, whether it's your garage, your bedrooms, your what?
It's garage, two-car garage.
Two-car garage on that.
And the driveway leading into it.
Not on the same side.
On the right side, or, you know, further west. So if I'm looking at my house, it's, the garage is on the right side.
So the, I think the question is what's closest to this.
To them? Oh, that's the sunroom and, um, living room?
Our house.
And that, yeah, the main dwelling.
Got you, yeah, that was, uh.
Okay, I misunderstood the question then, okay, yeah, that's, we have a sunroom patio there.
Yeah, if it were your garage on that side, maybe it'd be less of a concern for you, it's not, it's your main living room.
Yeah.
Do you know, the, the neighbor on the other side, do you know what's on that part of their house, ne, bordering this property?
On the, the left side?
Your, yeah, your neighbor's.
Yeah, they have a, that, well, there's a lean-to, actually, um, the Grex. The Grex house, there's like a. Yeah, that's, that's why he's recused. You're talking about the east side, right?
Yeah.
Correct, okay, yeah, it, it's like a lean-to driveway.
Okay, we don't care about.
Is there, is there a garage there, too?
It's a garage, but it's not a covered, you know, it's like a carport.
Carport.
It's like, yeah, that's a better way to describe it, yeah.
On the, on the.
On the left side, on their right side, their left side.
Got it.
Yeah, your left side, yeah. So actually, that's a pretty good match then, I guess, two garages on one, you figured, yeah, got you.
Any other questions?
No. Covered everything.
I, I guess I have one more, on the generator, is, is the reason to put the generator there because it's adjacent to where the air conditioning and, and those, or is, like, I don't know?
Yeah, correct, just to keep all the exterior, uh, units together.
To, to, um, one of the comments we got earlier, um, air-cooled versus water-cooled, it sounds like water-cooled might make more sense, given the fence and causing an echo chamber, would you be, I think you already answered it, but would you, you would be amenable to a water-cooled generator? Okay. Thank you.
I guess, um, they have anything else?
Anything else?
Anything else?
Any final questions?
Nope. Thank you for your time, nice to see you. Look forward to getting to know you guys, yep, yep.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
I've been meaning to stop by. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
You can state the decision if you want.
Are you guys are actually deliberating?
I think we're about to do that.
Surely are.
If, if there's no, I guess there's no other public there, so we're, uh, if we're closing the hearing, and I take it the applicant has nothing further?
Close it to the public?
The, I can, uh, well, uh, why don't I tee it up, and the board will decide which way we're going to go. The relief sought again, and on the east side yard setback is fourteen feet versus twenty-five feet minimum required. On the west side yard setback, it's sixteen point five feet versus twenty-five feet minimum required. Uh, and the generator setback to the dwelling, uh, minimum required is generally, well, is ten feet, but this is proposed to be only five feet from the subject dwelling. Uh, those are the three variances at issue, whether you find that they're satisfied by the C1 undue hardship, the C2 benefits outweigh the detriments, or neither, you will decide. I have the conditions as stipulated to by, or on behalf of the applicant, uh, to be those items set forth in the planner's report of February 11, uh, as well as stipulation to use liquid-cooled, uh, uh, air, uh, air conditioning?
Generator. Generator.
Generator, yeah, why didn't I think it was air, okay, liquid-cooled generator, um, the, uh, well, the, the fencing will be compliant, uh, as proposed, uh, and, uh, the gutters, uh, for the additions will bring, uh, stormwater runoff to the front of the house and direct towards Chestnut Street, uh, subject to the review and, well, it's not going to be subject really to our engineer's review and approval, I guess. But, because it's a minor development. Um, and the, uh, west side, uh, your, uh, the west side property line, uh, will have deer-resistant arborite, arborite, arborvitae.
Yeah.
Jesus Christ, and the, the, uh, and related and associated, uh, shrubbery and landscaping for screening purposes and softening, uh, visually, subject to the review and approval of our board planner, and those are all the conditions.
Did you get the, um, landscaping along the, the outdoor mechanicals?
Okay, I left that out, my apologies, yes, and also landscape screening, I guess that was in the memo, but landscape screening for the outside, uh, outdoor mechanical units, I guess, both the air conditioning, both air conditioning units and the generator. All as stipulated, so if it were a motion to grant, it'd be all that, if it was a motion to deny, it would be unconditional.
I have a question, I know there was talk of the fence, uh, is the fence in the plan, or is it?
No, I, I don't think so, right, you didn't show the proposed fence.
Do we need to stipulate to the fact that they're putting a fence in?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a, it'd be a solid fence, uh, compliant with the six-foot rear yard, uh, and four, and.
There were actually permit eight feet in the side and rear, so just, I would say that they said.
Compliant with the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, solid fencing, uh, and it would be at least, uh, both side yards and rear yard.
Rear, yes.
That time is over. And otherwise, it's for someone to, uh, make a motion either to grant or deny, and go from there.
Well, we could deliberate, you know?
You could deliberate as well.
That's, that's what this board's doing, so, uh, Meredith, can I impose upon you?
Okay, um, well, I think what you proposed looks great, I mean, I think it's a general and overall improvement to the, I, um, you know, looked at those photos and it looks like that property's, you know, been neglected for some time. Um, so I would imagine that, you know, any, uh, improvement to the existing structure is, you know, beneficial. I think too attaching, uh, accommodating from one car now to a two-car garage is, you know, realistic and versatile, uh, and desirable. I think it, um, you know, it's certainly going to, um, you know, improve your resale, resale value, whether that's in twenty or thirty or forty years. I do think, too, that the, uh, generator installation, you, you've shown some amenability as far as, um, the consideration to a water-cooled, uh, liquid-cooled generator. They do, I think, believe, last longer, because when you don't have the, uh, fans constantly turning, when you use water, obviously, they, they have, uh, they last longer, because you don't have to deal with fans wearing out over time. I do think that you, uh, showed some amenability as well as, as far as the aesthetic screening of landscaping, which I think will, you know, certainly improve the way that the existing property looks. I think it'll be to the benefit of your neighbors as well. I think you had also said, too, this is presently a two-bedroom, one-bathroom property, and. And going from three bedrooms to two bathrooms certainly sounds like, you know, something that's feasible and certainly needed. I don't know how big your family is, but I think that's, you know, a realistic desire to want to improve the size and make it more functional. Two, I think you've, you've been receptive too about the addition of gutters and the PVC valve running underground towards the street, which is what your neighbor has disclosed, that he, he has presently and something that you're open to doing. And, you know, I, we've, any questions it is that I've had, you know, you've answered. You've, you know, been fully disclosing. I think that you've, you know, kept an open line of conversation and, you know, provided that the parameters of what we've discussed this evening are met and held too. I would approve this application.
Randy, how about you?
Yeah, just cutting to the chase, I would vouch to approve as well. Appreciate the, your neighbors coming to give us their questions and concerns. Understanding that the property is going four feet closer to y'all, to your house, hopefully the four, at least four things, the conditions that it sounds like are going to be part of this will help mitigate that, those four feet extra. But again, you know, someone's going to leave somewhat disappointed here, I guess. So again, it's just one of those situations. But do want to thank you for taking the time to come today. And it sounds like we're doing everything else that we need to do to, for me anyway, to be comfortable voting yes to this. So thank you for your presentation and best of luck moving forward to everyone.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Yeah, I think, you know, I agree with what has already been said. I would also say that while, you know, there is an additional encroachment, I think we've, you've worked with us to try to ameliorate that. I think also, you know, to some extent, it sounds as if this property has been really kind of in disuse or I don't even know if it's been occupied, but in not, not well-kept. So I think that the, you know, what you're doing here will add to the aesthetic of the neighborhood. And I appreciate you working with us and I'd be supportive of this application.
Alice?
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming tonight and being open to the suggestions of the board. I appreciate the concerns of the nearby residents. Anytime that we get a property that comes in that is in need of repair and somebody is putting their heart and soul into doing what you're doing is a benefit to the town as a whole. So I appreciate that and thankful for that. And my biggest concern, as I mentioned, was the impact on the sound and the impact of the neighbors, of the heavy equipment that's going in there that, you know, wasn't there before really and now is. So keeping that in mind as you go forward is important. And appreciate you being open to our suggestions where that's concerned. So I would definitely be in approval of the application.
Thank you. Paul?
I think you did a great job tonight presenting the improvements to the house. I appreciate going through this process. I know it's long and takes a long time and a lot of extra money also. And I think you put some time and concern into, again, not putting your traditional McMansion up. You, you know, went with a ranch, kept it a ranch to fit in with the neighbors in the neighborhood. And I think the house will look great and when you're all done. And I'm full support of it. And thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. I will echo the sentiments of the board. And especially helpful was your neighbors coming in and welcoming you to the neighborhood before we even got through all of this. So they were very wide, open-minded, and you'll be lucky to have good neighbors like that. And I will be voting to the affirmative.
Thank you.
And the Grex too, but.
Oh, the things the Grex say.
So motion? Motion?
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Based on stipulation.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, and Mr. Zdrosny will be voting in place and for Mr. Chairman Grex, and Mr. White will be voting in place and for Mr. Rosenberg. So a motion made. Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Zdrosny?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman, Acting Chairman Rosenberg.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Welcome to the town.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Take care.
We'll be in touch.
Any old business or new business?
Nope. Big one coming up.
I got a big one coming up.
Big one coming up.
Bring your family, bring your friends, come on, come on down.
Bring your Frosties.
Everybody communicate with me, you know, so we can make sure we have seven voting members here.
Everybody was here, so, well, sans Gary.
Yeah, and I think Ms. Crawford, you already said you were, you will not be available.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn?
No, that is.
Yes, that's a motion to adjourn.
Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out.